Council and myself in the Pledge of Allegiance to please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first order of business is special business, Agenda Bill 6993, National Public Safety Telecommunications Week proclamation. And so with that, I would ask our Chief of Police, Scott Beerbaum, Commander Chris Wilson, Grace Larson, our supervisor, dispatch supervisor, and Felicia Moore, one of our communication specialists, to come forward. And so I have a proclamation that I would like to read this evening. Whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical services, and whereas when an emergency call occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property, and whereas the safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the Issaquah Communications Center, and whereas professional public safety telecommunications are a vital link for our community and are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services, and whereas public safety telecommunications are the single vital link for our police officers, firefighters, and emergency medical personnel by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety, and whereas public safety telecommunications of the Issaquah Communications Centers have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients, and whereas each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year. Now therefore, I Fred Butler, Mayor of the City of Issaquah, hereby proclaim the week of April 12 through 18, 2015 to be National Public Safety Telecommunications Week in the City of Issaquah in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our city and citizens safe. In witness whereof, I herein to set my hand and seal of the City of Issaquah this sixth day of April 2015. And with that, my personal thanks from each of our citizens for the outstanding role that you play in making Issaquah safe. Grace, thank you very, very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
And with that, Felicia, would you like to say a few words? Citizen comments are an important part of the public process. We take them seriously and factor them into the decisions that we make. Anyone from the public who wishes to comment will have the opportunity to do so. When recognized, please use the lectern and speak into the microphone. State your name, address, and relationship to the city. Please limit your comments to five minutes, and if you have written comments, please submit them to the city clerk. As a reminder, personal attacks, obscene language, derogatory remarks, and disruptive behavior will not be permitted. So with that, I would ask if anyone has signed up to speak this evening.
Yes, I have two. Anika Kumar, followed by Georgie Panatula. If you'd like to...
Gargi.
Gargi?
Gargi.
Okay. If you'd like to approach the microphone? Did you have comments?
Yes.
Perfect.
We have some handouts we'd like to give.
All right. If you could use the microphone, too?
Oh.
Thank you.
We have some handouts we'd like to give.
Hi, my name is Anika Kumar. I'm in the 7th grade, and I go to Beaver Lake Middle School. And my address is 26322 Southeast 21st Place, San Amish Washington, 98075.
Hi, my name is Gargi Panatula. I'm a 7th grader at Pacific Cascade Middle School, and my address is 2528 Larchmont Drive, Northeast, 98029.
We are sustainability ambassadors, and our mission is to empower youth to catalyze community sustainability. And today, we're going to talk to you about the First Annual Community Sustainability Summit in Issaquah, and it will be on April 22 at IHS, which is also Earth Day. Now, if you have... If you would please go to the second page of the agenda that's in front of you, you will see that there are goals listed on the top of the page. And the first goal for this summit is to report data-driven progress across generations and community sectors. And the second goal is to identify one or more 12-month collective impact projects. And the third goal is to communicate collective impact to our respective networks.
If we do achieve these goals, we have two outcomes. The first one would be to have measurable improvements in one or more indicators of community sustainability. So how would we measure this progress? Well, we have 26 sustainability indicators mentioned in the Community Sustainability Report created by the City of Issaquah. Every year, one of these comes out, and our entire summit will revolve around these 26 indicators.
Now, our second objective for the summit is to build stronger learning partnerships across generations and community sectors. Now, if you look at the agenda just below the outcomes, you will see that we have representation from all five middle schools and three high schools in the Issaquah School District. And if you flip over to the third page of the agenda, you will see that we also have representation from community sectors like the Built Green Program, the King County Enviro Stars, Mountains of Sound Greenway, Friends of Issaquah Salmon Hatchery, King County Forest Management, Recology Clean Scapes, Cascade Water Alliance, and Cascade Bicycle Club.
So what will we do on April 22? Well, the first half of the day is devoted to progress reports from the student representatives and the community sectors, which my friend Anika just mentioned. And in the second half, we will find trends, data patterns, and gaps in these reports, and form a 12-month collective impact project, which both the generations and the community sectors can achieve. So we would be honored if one, or maybe even more, of the city council members would join us on this summit. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very, very much to each of you. Has anyone else signed up to speak this evening?
There are no others.
Is there anyone else in the audience desiring to speak this evening? Anyone else desiring to speak? Third and final call, anyone else desiring to speak? Seeing no one, then, audience comments are closed, and we'll move now to committee and regional reports, beginning with Councilmember Milligan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was just going to report on a couple of things from my assignments in the community. One is that the Chamber of Commerce, I mentioned before, that they're seeking a new executive director, and I can now tell you that on their website, they have the job description posted. So I hope that all of those government geeks listening tonight will be reading up on that and seeing if this is their next job. I also wanted to report that I have Cascade Water Alliance Resource Committee meeting this Thursday, and we will continue to discuss the progress in refilling Lake Taps and the upgrades being done to that facility. And then next week, I have a meeting with the King Conservation District, Monday, April 13. And just as a reminder, the program of work that Councilmember Polly worked with the King Conservation District last year on, the program of work includes regional sustainability... Excuse me. Regional and sustainable equitable food sources, urban agriculture, rural agriculture... agriculture, excuse me, rural forestry, and urban tree canopies, shorelines, and riparian habitat, and landowner incentives. So it's a huge undertaking, and I'm really excited to be on that. And we, again, we meet on April 13. We meet monthly with the Executive Committee. And that's my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Polly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Land and Shores' April 2 meeting was canceled. The next meeting date is May 7, but the agenda has not yet been set. I also attended the Puget Sound Regional Council Growth Management Policy Board meeting on April 2. Issaquah City staff, Trish, Kristen, and Charlie were all there, presenting to the Board on Issaquah's application for a Regional Growth Center designation. It was very well received by the Board. There was a lot of interesting questions. I would suggest that it's maybe no longer than 15 minutes. It's worth it to watch the video of the presentation. The staff did an excellent job. I found the questions and answers very informative as well. The next step will be for the Board to vote on it at their meeting on June 4. Couple of other items were discussed, mostly very general, regional ones, some traffic and congestion data was also pretty good. But their next meeting... There will not be a May meeting, so their next meeting will be the June 4 meeting.
Thank you. Councilmember Scher.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening to members of the viewing public. The Council Infrastructure Committee is due to meet on Thursday, April 16. However, I've been informed that we may need to look at moving the meeting date to accommodate a prospective Agenda Bill. So I will want to touch base with both of you, perhaps after the meeting or at some time offline. We may be looking at moving it to the following week, depending on schedule availability. It was brought to my attention that there are no infrastructure meetings scheduled between the April 20 council meeting and a meeting in May, the next council meeting in May, and so therefore, it would make it difficult to bring back Agenda Bills to that May 4 council meeting if we were to have the infrastructure meeting too early in the month of April, just based on the way the calendar falls. So just a little bit of background information, but for anyone who might be interested in attending, that April 16 date is subject to change at this time. Please watch the website for updates on the meeting date and time. The Eastside Transportation Partnership is going to meet this Friday. The location is being changed to the Redmond Silver Cloud Inn. So if you're attending the ETP meeting, please make sure that you go to the Silver Cloud near Overlake and not the Bellevue School District, or you'll be probably by yourself or with anyone else who didn't get the memo. We do have a very full agenda for Friday's meeting and some notable guest speakers who will be attending. First off, we're going to have State House Representative Jesson Farrell, who is on the State House Transportation Committee and able to provide some insights on that committee's work on a prospective transportation package. We will then have public comment after Representative Farrell's speech, which is a little bit out of order for the partnership, but we needed to accommodate her schedule. We're also going to have some reports. The PSRC is going to give us an update on the 2016 FHWA funding project selection process. And then we're going to have a report from the Planning Committee, which may also carry over to the end of the meeting and go to the order if we're not able to discuss it all in the five minutes that's allotted for that particular item. Then we have a very special guest speaker, U.S. House Representative Susan Delbene, will be visiting the Eastside Transportation Partnership this month and speaking to us about efforts in Congress with respect to transportation and welcoming questions from the members as well. And then we'll have a presentation from King County Metro on their Long Range Plan and Service Guidelines Task Force and further information on reports if we need to. The meeting is scheduled to go till about 9:15 or 9:30, so it should be a pretty full morning. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Barber.
Thank you, Mayor. Tola is not here this evening, so I'll do his report on the upcoming Services and Safety Committee meeting, which is the 14th. There's two items before us that night. The first is 6975, the Skateboard Park Project. We'll be looking at a PowerPoint presentation that evening, preliminary expense options, and also view the timeline. The next item is 6955, 2015 Comprehensive Plan and Zoning Map Amendments. That will be presented by Trish Hydenin, and we will be reviewing some of the long-range plans for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Eastside Fire and Rescue Board Personnel Committee had a meeting on April 1 at Headquarters to go over the fire chief's goals for 2015 and to discuss some transition items for 2015. That's in relation to several senior-level staff who are retiring in early 2016, which includes the chief, head of maintenance, the deputy chief, and a human resources manager. The next Eastside Fire and Rescue Board meeting is this Thursday, April 9, at 4:00 p.m. at the Headquarters. Thank you. That's my report.
Thank you. Council President Wintersen.
Yes, on March 19, this past March 19, I had the special privilege of chairing the Infrastructure Committee meeting. Councilmember Scher was out of town, so I filled in for that. Highlights from that meeting where we did get briefed by staff on their initial plan to work on the Mobility Master Plan starting this year. An outline has been produced, and we had some good comments and some feedbacks, and we're looking for some additional feedback from staff on that, particularly the development of maybe like a vision and why statement. Why are we doing the Mobility Master Plan? So we were briefed on that, and there is an ambitious plan in there to accomplish quite a bit of this in this year still. Other items of note, we considered Agenda Bill 6973, the Cooperative Watershed Management Grant Application. And that is a grant application, so it's regarding Nature Run... Excuse me, Salmon Run Nature Park, so for some improvements to improve water flow there. The two other items that we discussed, Agenda Bill 2960... Excuse me, 29... 6923, pardon me. Vacation of a portion of Southeast 68th Place is actually on the agenda for tonight for a public hearing. So we were briefed on that matter as well. And then finally, we discussed Agenda Bill 6983, Complete Streets Sidewalk Extension on Newport Way, 12th Avenue Northwest to Maple Street. And that is on tonight's consent calendar, and it was a good conversation. I think it highlighted the need for really being able to understand when we're recommending projects for complete streets, and yet the Council... The committee did support that in its entirety as proposed. So that... I have no other reports. That concludes my report.
Thank you. As noted, Councilmember Martz is not here this evening. He is excused. For the mayor's report, there will not be an executive session this evening. But Councilmember Milligan and I attended the March 25 Cascade Water Alliance Board Meeting. Of interest to Issaquah, the Board approved a motion to execute a contract for the development and implementation of a teacher fellows program based on the advancement of water education in Cascade Water Alliance member school districts to include the Issaquah School District. I attended the March 26 Sound Transit Board Meeting. We received a University Link Extension update. That is the next 3.1-mile segment between Westlake and the University of Washington. It is scheduled to open early during the first quarter of 2016, and it is also under budget to the tune of about $150 million. We also received an update on the ST3 Consexual System Expansion scenarios that are being developed, and those will see the light of day sometime over the next three to four weeks. I attended the March 26 Puget Sound Regional Council Executive Board Meeting. Of interest was the approval of military facilities and regional planning position statement, which was consistent with the Sound Cities Association adopted position. I testified before the House Transportation Committee meeting on March 26 in Olympia, urging the committee to maintain the I-90 corridor investments that were in the Senate package and to ensure a full level of funding, revenue authority of $15 billion for sound transit. Myself and staff hosted Legislative Assistant Joe Eckert of Senator Murray's Washington Office on April 1. We discussed transportation and infrastructure projects of interest to Issaquah and took a tour of those projects in our community. Finally, I attended a meeting, meeting two of the King County Services Guidelines Task Force on April 1. We discussed performance measurement, geographic value, and alternative service. As Councilmember Scher pointed out a little while ago, they will be briefing the Eastside Transportation Partnership on that ongoing work. And with that, that concludes the mayor's report. We'll now move to the consent calendar. I would ask the clerk to read the consent calendar into the record.
Certainly. The consent calendar was distributed to council in advance for study, and if authorized, council action will occur by single motion regarding the following items. Item A seeks approval of account payables and payroll dated April 6. Item B seeks approval of the council committee work session minutes dated March 9. Item C, initially seeking approval of the city council regular meeting minutes dated March 16, is now requested to be removed from the consent agenda to be heard under regular business this evening, specifically regarding the committee review schedule of AB 6955, the 2015 Comprehensive Plan and Zoning Map Amendments. Item D seeks approval of the committee of whole council minutes dated March 24. Item E, AB 6929, franchise agreement level 3 communications. And TW Telecom seeks referral to council infrastructure committee. Item F, AB 6941, is the Wyra 8 interlocal agreement. That seeks authorization. Item G, AB 6952, Northwest Dogwood Bridge replacement construction contract seeks bid award. Item H, AB 6954, project acceptance of Northwest Dogwood Sidewalk and Water Main Improvement seeks acceptance and release of retainage. Item I, AB 6966, project acceptance of Mount Park Booster Station seeks acceptance and release of retainage. Item J, AB 6973, the 2015 Cooperative Watershed Management Grant Application for the Salmon Run Nature Park seeks authorization to submit. Item K, 6983, complete street sidewalk extension on Newport Way from 12th Avenue Northwest to Maple Street seeks authorization of expenditure. Item L, AB 6986, franchise agreement level 3 communications LLC seeks referral to council infrastructure committee. Item M, AB 6987, ecology local source control program grant application seeks authorization to submit. Item N, AB 6988, coordinated prevention grant application seeks authorization to submit. Item O, AB 6992, surplus city equipment seeks approval. This concludes the reading.
Thank you. Does any council member desire to remove an item from the consent calendar other than the one mentioned in the clerk's reading for separate consideration? Councilmember Scher.
Thank you, Mayor. I would ask to pull down Agenda Bill 6983, which is item K on the consent calendar for regular business.
7K will be moved to regular business, and so I would ask for your... Council President Wintersen.
I would move to approve the consent calendar as amended. And again, there were two amendments, the one, item K, to bring brought down to regular business, and also the item for the meeting minutes from March 16, 2015. And we'll have a conversation during regular business about how we need to amend those meeting minutes. So I move to approve the consent calendar as amended.
Seconded.
It's moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The consent calendar as amended is approved. Moving now to public hearing, the first item under public hearings is Agenda Bill 6923, Vacation of a Portion of Southeast 68th Place. The guidelines for public participation are the same as before, but before we do that, a staff presentation from Gary Costa, our transportation manager.
Hello, everybody. Glad to be here tonight. And Gary Costa, Transportation Manager, Public Works Engineering. I'll be presenting to you the Agenda Bill 6923, request to vacate Southeast 68th Place by the petitioners adjacent to the property, the right-of-way. Purpose tonight is to hold a public hearing and to consider vacating this right-of-way 6068th Place. Wanted to just give you an idea of the location. It's located north of I-90, west of 230th, and just east of Eastlake-Sam Parkway. It's a vacant land that has been used for parking of vehicles, and the city has been doing maintenance of the property as it is part of the right-of-way, but that's minimum. As a public benefit for the... To consider for the street vacation, one of the benefits is that this will put the property on the tax roll, so we'll be collecting tax for the property. The other is, I mentioned, the maintenance. We would no longer need to maintain the property once it's vacated. It allows an increase in economic development on the property based on the use of the adjacent properties, and will also provide revenue in the amount of approximately $200,000 or $3,000,000 if the council chooses to require the payment up to the full assessed value. And it will allow relocation by WashDOT of fish passage and improvements that are needed by WashDOT. Whether or not the right-of-way is needed by the city, this particular location is a dead end, so there's really no need for it. However, if we want to make a trail connection from 230th to the existing High Point Trail, that can be done through Locust Street, which is just south of there. That runs... It's a 60-foot right-of-way that runs from 230th over to the WashDOT right-of-way. So pursuant to IMC 1220.040, city council can require up to 100% of the assessed value, which is being... Has been assessed at $200,000 or $3,000 for the property that's shown here, approximately 10,130 square feet. I'm also showing a picture that so you can get an idea, the public can see what this area is being used for, is for parking of vehicles in gravel area. So can... The city council can authorize up to 100% if the property has been right-of-way for more than 20... more than 25 years, and we've been able to identify that it's been right-of-way at least since 1965. So with that, I'd like to close and say the administration recommends the draft ordinance that is presented before you after holding the public hearing. I can answer any questions you might have.
Are there questions? Councilmember Share.
Thank you. I do have a question, Gary. In the bill, I was reading something, and again, as was mentioned earlier, I wasn't at the committee meetings, so I was traveling on business, but there was something about WashDOT wanting something for a fish passage, and I didn't understand that as one of the rationales for why doing this vacation was important. So can you elaborate on that?
Basically, what I understand is that allows the developer to make certain improvements that were required by WashDOT, and it allows WashDOT to complete those improvements on their, in their right-of-way. I don't know much more than that, but it allows the property to move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I might say that I am still a little confused by the answer, or there still seems to be something missing. What would the property owner do, and why would they? Still a question to me, but that's not my question. I have an easier question, I think. In the ordinance, and it's on page 125 of the packet, when we talk about the assessed value and the price of the vacation, it says that the right-of-way to be vacated shall compensate the, owners of the property shall compensate the city the full appraised value of the right-of-way in the amount of $200,000 or $3,000 very definitively, and then back in the Agenda Bill, it says up to without any definition about how low that could go. So those two don't seem to match.
Okay, so that was something stated by the assessor, but the IMC does say that you have, you can require up to 100% of the assessed value if it's been right-of-way more than 25 years.
So when we're voting on this, are we voting on the ordinance as it's written that says the price shall be 100,000 or 200,000?
I think that's assuming that you're going to, the way it was written, it was assuming that you're going to require up to 100%. If you decide that you do not want to require the 100%, that ordinance would be modified to reflect the actual amount that you're requiring.
Okay.
Other questions?
Well, I just have a comment. I think the move to says adopt ordinance number, so we're not adopting an Agenda Bill, we're adopting an ordinance, and the ordinance says 203,000.
Okay, so with that, we will open the public hearing at 7:35, and as a reminder, when recognized, come to the lectern and speak into the microphone, state your name, address, and relationship to the city, limit your comments to five minutes, and if you have written comments, submit those to the clerk. I would ask, has anyone signed up to speak on this item at this public hearing? Is there anyone in the audience desiring to speak this evening on this item? Anyone desiring to speak?
Not unless you have questions.
Third and final call. So we will close public comment at 7:36, and I would ask if there is any discussion or what is the will of the council this evening. Council President Winterstein.
Yes, I would like to make a motion to adopt ordinance number...
2736.
2736, vacating a portion of Southeast 68th Place and establishing certain conditions of said vacation.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Discussion or further questions? Councilmember Share.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm still very confused about the fish passage. I don't understand why that's even in the bill as a basis for vacating the street, and the applicant didn't provide any comment this evening, so I don't really have much to go on right now, other than apparently the basis for doing this is that the applicant wants to be able to sell, is my understanding, limited as it may be, sell a portion or all of the adjoining property, and the vacation of the street will permit that to be done so that the property becomes more developable. And so I certainly understand that the city would get paid fair market value, 100% of that, $200,000 plus, and I understand that if it becomes developed, it would go on the city tax roll at some future point in time. It sounds like there is some marginal public interest, and I'm not sure off the top of my head what the standard is, because it's been a few years since we've done one of these. The last time I remember this being addressed was Federal Drive, which never came quite to fruition, or any fruition, and I remember a very, very detailed discussion of the public interest being a prerequisite to a street vacation. Now, I went back and looked at the statute, and I found that language, but it was only in the context of a street that abuts a waterway, and Federal Drive doesn't abut a waterway, but yet we had that discussion. So I'm just sort of really confused about what is the standard by which we're supposed to decide this? The public interest, like I said, it seems somewhat tenuous, because anytime you vacate a street on behalf of a private property owner, you will necessarily receive either fair market value up to a certain amount, or the benefits of what may come in the future of that land. I mean, that was the same with Federal Drive. We were going to get a nice big shopping center out of vacating Federal Drive. So I guess you can make that argument for any street, anywhere in any city. Obviously, no one spoke on this, so there doesn't appear to be public opposition. You can take that as, well, nobody really cares if we vacate 68th Place, which is a dead end and nobody uses it, and so why shouldn't we do this? But I think it's incumbent on us to analyze what is the public interest and whether, as a standard for deciding that, simply having it on a tax roll is sufficient to help facilitate what appears to be a purely private transaction. So I guess I'm asking for a little more clarity on the rationale and the standard for this particular decision.
So our city administrator is sort of leaning forward, and our deputy city administrator has sort of inched towards the microphone, so which one of you would like to lead it off?
I think we can handle this as a team, because there was a legal question involved, and our acting city attorney this evening will be able to answer that. I think Emily has some additional information about the site itself. Just to add, there was an earlier comment on how often this occurs. We've actually had 51 street vacations since 1960 that have occurred on different, you know, areas in the city, so it's not like this is the first time around on this situation. We've, and the process we're following is a similar process to what we've done on the previous street vacations. But with that, we'll answer the legal question, and then we have some more information on this site.
So providing legal assistance, Jim Haney this evening. It's been a while since you've been here, Jim. Thanks for filling in for our normal city attorney, and now's your chance.
Well, thank you for having me, Mayor and Council. It is on. It is on. Can anyone, can people hear me, or?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. There's no specific quantum of evidence that you have to have in order to determine public interest. As with everything that the council does, and as with street vacations, you have to have some public purpose or public interest in vacating the street, but none of the cases relating to street vacations specify a particular quantum of evidence or how much you need to find what the standard is. What the cases do say is that this is a matter of legislative discretion for the city council to decide, so whatever evidence you feel is appropriate and meets your standard as a council of what the public interest is to the city of Issaquah and its citizens is sufficient in order to sustain a vacation.
Thank you.
Thank you, and Emily?
Sure. I'd be happy to answer Councilmember Share's question about fish passage and what that has to do with this property and the street vacation. I think your description of the property situation is accurate. What this would enable us and the property owner and WashDOT to do is to make improvements to fish passage in this area. WashDOT needs to make some improvements to culverts in the vicinity. The fork of the creek runs on this property, and having the street vacated will enable the property to be developed in a manner that will help us to then make the improvements to the culverts and make improvements to the creek and storm drainage on this property that will help restore some of the habitat for fish. Gives us more room to work with.
Does that help?
I think I understand that, and you say the property will be developed in such a manner. Is that, what's the time horizon or expected use of that property that would then be allowing us to make those improvements?
I can't speak to that. I think the property owner is still working on business proposal. We have no submitted site plan at this moment in time. It's just been early conversations because of the complexities of the parcel. So the city has been working with a property owner and his development team. We've also been in conversations with the tribes and with WashDOT about the particular situation on this property.
Okay. No, I appreciate all the answers and as well as the city attorney's comments. That helps me formulate a decision on this issue. Thank you.
Are there any other questions or discussion? Council President Winterstein.
I just want to comment. This is my first street vacation, so we may have done 51 more, but this is the first time. I mean, this is, so the street doesn't go anywhere, and the, I like that phrase, there's no quantum, it's our discretion, so I intend to execute, you know, my discretion with my vote. I think that there's clearly value in the land, and the city would be realizing that in the principal paid, you know, for the value of the land to a private entity. And then, should there be any further development that could bring additional kind of, you know, tax revenues or other type of revenues to the city, I think that's clearly a benefit to the public as well. And there doesn't seem to be too much loss of circulation capabilities for mobility. And in committee, one other thing, you can barely see it on that drawing on the right. At the very bottom, it says Northeast Locust Street, and that's actually the right-of-way that was referred to earlier. So should we in the future ever want to create some type of public trail from 230th over to the existing trail that's there, we have that corridor available to us. So the possibility of using this existing street as a corridor to connect the street to the trail, you know, we've got a really nice alternative just a few feet away on Locust Street. So unbalanced, when I consider all of those, I can easily support this petition to vacate the street.
Other comments or discussion? Councilmember Share.
Thank you. I just wanted to see if anybody else had a comment. I did want to point out, in our municipal code, piggybacking on Paul's comment about circulation, it does indicate that one-half of the revenue received as compensation must be dedicated to the acquisition, improvement, development, and related maintenance of public open space or transportation capital projects. And especially at a time when we need funding for transportation capital projects, you know, this being a street that doesn't affect circulation, but the funds, at least half of those funds, can be used for worthwhile capital projects, that's a pretty strong point in support of this. So just want to make sure everybody understood what the money would actually go to. It doesn't just get poured into the fund.
Councilmember Milligan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Councilmember Winterstein. I had forgotten to think about that, and when we're looking at the urban village just east of this, the connectivity to the valley was very important, and the planning of that and trail system that brings those people down into the central Issaquah Plan has a trail connection, and I think what you're saying is that the Northeast Locust Street provides the connection that, a right-of-way provides the opportunity for a connection for that trail system to the major trail, that's the Issaquah-Preston Trail, correct? Excellent. Thank you very much.
Other questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting ordinance number 2736, vacating a portion of Southeast 68th Place and establishing certain conditions on said vacation signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that carries unanimously. Moving now to our second public hearing, Agenda Bill 6981, consideration of support, King County, April 28, 2015, special election, property tax levy, a proposition authorizing a property tax levy in excess of the levy limitation contained in Chapter 84.55 RCW for a consecutive nine-year period at a rate of not more than seven cents per $1,000 of assessed valuation for the capital transition and financing costs of the Puget Sound Emergency Radio Network project. We have a staff report from?
My name is David Mendel.
From?
From King County.
David, take it away.
Thank you. As I said, my name's David Mendel. I'm the project director for the PESARN project, and I really appreciate the opportunity to come and speak with you tonight. It probably goes without saying that this project is intended to replace the current radio system that is used throughout King County, and oftentimes, I take it for granted that everyone understands what an emergency radio system is, but I just want to spend a minute here and make sure that folks understand that it's not just in the time of dire emergency that this radio system is used. It is used every single day on every single call that your police, your fire, EMS go on. Your school district has radios on this radio system. General government throughout the county has radios on this radio system, and it's a crucial part of our everyday fabric of getting business done and protecting citizens. I recently did a brief where people asked me, well, when was the last time this was used? And it was used 115 million times last year. So, you know, it's used literally every second of every day, and I think that that's very important to point out. But thank you for having me here today. I'm told by the leadership in the county that this is by far and away the most complex project that King County will do this decade. It's very hard, therefore, to distill this down in a 15-minute brief into anything that really makes sense. I will do my best here, but I'll also make myself available at any time for folks, whether it's in a public hearing or individual briefings, so please don't hesitate to contact my office, and my contact information is at the end of the slide deck. PESARN is an acronym for the Puget Sound Emergency Radio Network. This will be a voice radio network. I would love to stand here in front of you today and tell you that we're bringing broadband cellular data services in, and that this is the new technology that's going to take over communications, but the fact of the matter is that that technology does not exist today that would be needed to support voice operations for our first responders. So this network that we're building is a voice network. I also want to be very careful, we have a lot of confusion perhaps because of our acronym. There's a thing called Public Safety Answering Points, which is the 911 dispatch centers. We are not related to what is called PSAP consolidation. Our project will put dispatch consoles at every dispatch center, and we're not judging how many there should be in any particular location, and we want to be very clear that we're not doing anything in this And we want to be very clear that we're not doing anything in this project to affect how the, how dispatch centers are operating today. I think it's also important to point out that PESARN is used, I mentioned a moment ago, by, by many different agencies, but it's available to all public and private agencies throughout the county that perform emergency first responder functions. So, we actually have a couple of private operators of EMS or ambulance systems, excuse me, that are on the network. I think every other case is actually a governmental entity, but we're by code allowed to have private enterprise on, on the network as well. We're often asked, "Why do we need to do this?" And it's, it's much like other technological things that exist or mechanical things that exist, and as it gets older, it gets worn out. And that's exactly what's happening to our network. Our network was first built in the 90s, and it's, was designed for a 20-year life cycle, and we're right at that 20 years now for many of the pieces of the, of the network. So, as our network gets older, it of course needs more repairs. Unfortunately, at the same time that the repair rate is increasing, in a couple of years, our ability to actually fix it will decrease because we are losing support from our, our support system. And that support completely goes away December of, the end of December in 2018. But almost as important to that is the county has grown since we built this network. We built the network. It worked, has worked phenomenally well for 20 years now, but it is very limited in its size and its capacity to what exists today. We lost the ability in 2007 to expand our network. So, since then, we haven't been able to expand it. And of course, our population has continued to grow primarily to the east, and there's many areas of the county that are, that are uncovered today. But the other maybe sad reality here is that there are also populated areas in the urban environment that are uncovered today. And one of the things that we absolutely have to do with this new network is make sure that those areas are all covered in addition to other parts of the, the county that go out to the east. I mentioned capacity a minute ago. The new network will bring much more capacity, and, and that's something that, that is very important in terms of the new network. Most of what this slide talks to is really just features and functions. I've, I've mentioned some of these things like coverage and capacity. We will bring increased connectivity. So, an example of that is across the street, I presume, is where the 911 answering center is. But, but in any event, here in Issaquah, we, we will bring in redundant paths in and out of that center so that you can't have one single point of failure. And this is something that we don't have today. So, we're gonna, we're gonna do things like that in terms of the connectivity. But our radios and our, our infrastructure in general will be more capable. So, we will be bringing new radios in. Those radios will have more capacity just in the radio itself. We have things like, excuse me, things like GPS, which isn't to be confused with the GPS that you may have in your car. This is literally a latitude and a longitude that reads out on a device. But back at the 911 dispatch centers, the, the call takers and the, the operators there will be able to look at that radio and see where the radio is. So, there's not a mapping function like you would see in your car. But other features like encryption, these are very important, we find, especially with law enforcement. We're seeing more and more throughout the, the state where the bad guys will create a problem somewhere and listen to everybody go respond to that problem. And once everybody gets over on the other side of town, they do what they're really up to on, in another location where they can, can have, do bad things. We also intend to be able to program these radios over the air. This is really a feature that should be very helpful to officers and firefighters because traditionally what has happened is if a radio needs to be just simply reprogrammed because the chief would like their, their folks to talk to other people, what has to happen is each one of those radios has to go into a radio shop somewhere for work. And typically, that might be a four-hour turnaround at best, and that's four hours of lost productivity. Whereas with these over-the-air programming features, then we can actually just program the radio at night while the officer is off duty or any other time during the day so that it doesn't interfere with, with operations. And it's, it's much more efficient in that way. One of the things that we'll also do with the project is we will bring new dispatch consoles to Issaquah and replace your existing dispatch consoles. And then we'll also make sure that, that in general, this system is much more reliable than our current system. We know that we'll be improving the ability of police and fire and EMS to be able to, to talk. You have a major thoroughfare that goes right through the middle of the city here, which is I-90. And one of the things that will be very important is interoperability with agencies like Washington State Patrol, which I would imagine you operate with on a daily basis. So, that, that will also be something that's very important. And we've talked about covering more of the, the county as well. Here's just a very quick snapshot of some of the things that are important for the actual gains for Issaquah. We'll be replacing all of your end-user radios. There's the numbers here for law enforcement and for your school district. Also, Eastside Fire and Rescue will get new radios, and then the consoles that I mentioned. One of the things that we've done in this project in terms of criteria is, believe it or not, the current radio system was not built with any real performance criteria in mind. And the contract for the current system is about an eighth of an inch thick. It has nothing in it but terms and conditions and the ability for the county to buy stuff. This new contract for PESARN is 1,300 pages of criteria. And we worked with your first responders and others throughout the county for years to bring those requirements together. And one of them is how we look at signal. And I, I did not bring a slide tonight that shows how we've broke the, the county down, but suffice it to say that where we used to say the entire county will be covered to a certain extent, now what we're doing is we're looking at it at the city level. And we're saying each city will be covered at 97% level, and we will test to those requirements. So, the city of Issaquah will have a minimum of 97% coverage throughout the, the city as well as the rest of the cities in the county and the unincorporated county. Another thing that we've done is up on the, the mountain passes, we've also built out the system greatly up there, at least the plans are to build out the system greatly up there. And we'll be adding 11 new sites on Highway 2, Highway 90, and Highway 410 combined, where today there are only three sites for all three of those roads. So, it's a significant improvement in coverage. And, and what we're doing is asking for 95% of those roads to be covered within King County. I mentioned a moment ago the enhanced interoperability. We will have interoperability with our neighbors, whether they're to the south in Pierce County or City of Tacoma, or within King County such as Boeing or State Patrol or the Port of Seattle, or to the north with Snohomish County. We will be fully interoperable with all of those radio systems. Just a minute here to talk about what we've been doing. I know that city council here has passed an interlocal agreement related to PESARN as well as a memorandum of, of agreement. So, I didn't spend any time in the slide deck talking about those because I know you're well-versed in that. But what may not be entirely clear here is that the county has not been doing this project from a, from a unilateral perspective by any shape at all. We've been working with the current system owners, which is Seattle, the Eastside Public Safety Communications Agency of which Issaquah is one of the members of that, the Valley Communications Cities down to the south, as well as representatives from King County and Seattle. And we've been working collaboratively both at the technical level, and we have what we call a project steering committee. And as you know, in one of the, the interlocal agreement you passed, we will be forming a joint board that will form the joint governance for this project going forward. So, at every step of the way, whether it was setting our requirements, figuring out how to do our request for proposal, scoring system vendor responses, all of those things have been done collaboratively. And in fact, we've worked with your acting city attorney to write those agreements, which is another example of that. But we also did things like alternative analysis. We spent two years writing a report for our steering committee that laid out all of the possible technical alternatives, and then we made a recommendation to go with a voice land-mobile radio system. And then, of course, there's the funding that, that we'll talk about here in a moment. This is a very busy chart that has, and it's cut and pasted right out of my project budget. It's line for line exactly what we have in our project budget. I'm happy to answer any questions. I didn't necessarily intend to go through each one of these line items. But suffice it to say that total project cost without financing is 246 million. That's of course rounded. Our financing costs are projected to be 27 million, which gives us a total project with financing of $273 million. This is a very expensive project. At least in my, in my, in my budget it is. These are some of the facts with the levy lid lift that has been put on the April 28th ballot. This was mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, so I won't go through this other than to point out that the medium homeowner impact for a $378,000 home, which is what median price was here just, just a couple of weeks ago, is $26.46 per year. So, that's, that's what we would be looking at with that funding measure. And then lastly is my contact information. So, I'm very happy to take any questions that anyone would have.
David, thank you. Questions of David? I want to thank you for a very comprehensive overview of the Puget Sound Emergency Radio Network. And I see a smile on our chief of police's face over there. He really cannot wait to get those new radios. And Greg Tryon back in the back has a smile on his face also. So, with that, no questions or discussion. Council President Winterstein?
Thank you, David. I actually have a question for the chief. And last, as you mentioned, David, we authorized the ILA for the implementation committee. I was wondering if you, it's April now, and if you could give us any kind of, is there any type of update or status update or news or any progress to report on that? Answer could be no.
I can actually, I can give you a little bit of update there. All the cities, so there's, there's 12 parties to that interlocal agreement, 11 cities in the county. 11 cities have signed that, actually signed it, and it's in my office with those signed copies. And King County Council has this pending for action. So, we expect in the coming weeks that this gets on their agenda for action, but that's the only thing that's holding this back from being executed at this point.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So, I'm going to open the public hearing at 8:06. And just as a quick reminder, when recognized, please come to the lectern, speak into the mic, state your name, address, relationship to the city, and limit your comments to five minutes or less. And so, has anyone signed up to speak on Agenda Bill 6981 this evening?
No.
Is there anyone in the audience desiring to speak on Agenda Bill 6981? The second call, anyone desiring to speak? Third and final call, the public hearing is closed at 8:06 and a half. And with that, what is the council's pleasure on that item?
Does anybody want to make a motion?
Page 130 of 151.
I'd like to move to approve Resolution Number 2015-07, supporting King County Proposition 1, property tax levy, emergency public safety radio network, replacing project set for the April 28, 2015 special election.
Second.
Moved and seconded questions or discussion? Councilmember Milligan.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to make a, a quick comment. We did talk about this with the ILA agreement when I was on the Services and Safety Committee before, and I'm glad to see it progressing to the material of the radios. And, and one thing that I particularly enjoyed is being able to progress in technology this way and still maintain our locally controlled dispatch center, which is important to me and a great testimony to the flexibility and opportunities that these cities have taken on to allow us to work as a group in this way and maintain our autonomy elsewhere. So, I'll be supporting the bill.
Other questions or discussion? Seeing none then, all those in favor of approving Resolution Number, excuse me? Excuse me?
I think there was some contemplation going on.
Yeah, contemplation.
Oh. Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you. I, I have no doubt whatsoever that we need new radios and we need a new system. It's outdated. It's been talked about for a long time. My discomfort at this point is that I don't, I don't really feel comfortable that I have enough information to put, to support something that sends the message that, it sends the message that I have studied this and I, and I know all about it, and I don't. It's, as we saw, 270-some million dollars, and we've talked about the ILA in December. And I'm, I would like to have had an opportunity to review this in depth at, in another forum a lot sooner than an upcoming election, or, yeah, a special election on the 28th. At the same time, I don't want to vote no. I don't want to send that message either because I, that tells voters that I don't support this. So, that's, that's kind of my discomfort and my, my dilemma. And I also know that there, there's an auditor's report out there, the King County Auditor's Report, has some concerns. I think there are fairly significant concerns. And so, it would be nice to have those questions directly answered about why there's sort of disagreement about project and how specifically we move forward and what some of the questions are about, so, so maybe why there's a, thinking of the words here. The auditor had questions, and I think the executive's office didn't really think that those questions needed to be fully addressed. And I respect sort of both sides, but given that those, those concerns are there, we don't really have an opportunity to review this in depth. But again, it's, it's a dilemma because I don't, it's hard for me to, to tell voters that I support something which sends the message that they support something when I don't feel like I've had time to really fully dive into this. I don't, I, I don't really want to vote no either because I know we need a new system. So, I'll wait for other comments.
Other comments? Councilmember Scher?
Thank you. You know, I wasn't going to weigh in, but I, I wanted to speak to this then in light of Stacy's concerns and comments. And, you know, I've- And, you know, I've often spoken about a general discomfort with raising taxes and, you know, the fact that taxes never go down for things, they always go up. But at some point, there's also taxes that are good and are necessary for public safety, for a benefit that's really provided. And when I look at this particular levy that's going to be on the ballot, what I see is a real need for better equipment and better communication among emergency responders. And the first thought that pops into my mind when I think about communication and emergency response is the difficulty that our brave first responders had on 9/11 when they couldn't communicate with each other, whether it was because of radio traffic or lack of synchronicity between their systems, whatever that may have been that caused that defect and cost a lot of lives. And that is not something I would ever want to see. You know, heaven forbid we have that type of disaster in our region, but I would never want to see a lack of communication and a lack of synchronicity among our first responders. And when we're faced with an aging network that requires these types of significant investments and upgrades, the choice is clear. We let it degrade and we try to find a Plan B or some other option, or we take this necessary step of taxing ourselves to replace and repair this vital system. And I think emergency management and emergency responsiveness is one of our paramount duties as elected officials on behalf of our community. And in fact, it's why one of my goals for this year's retreat deals with emergency response and trying to perhaps someday get a comp plan element on that issue because we need to be prepared as a community and as a region. And even though I'm not a very strong proponent of new taxes, there comes a point where we have to fund this type of vital infrastructure improvement somehow, and this appears, in my opinion, to be the best way to do that. So I'm supportive of this. I didn't hear anyone speak against it. I certainly haven't heard anyone in the press or the community speak against proceeding in this manner. And so I'm hopeful that any sort of issues with respect to the auditor's analysis can be addressed through the implementation phase of this. But I support the prospective levy and would encourage folks to vote yes on it and approve it.
Council President Winterson.
You know what? I want to make sure others have had a chance.
I'm.
Well, maybe I haven't spoken. Okay, so David, I'm going to ask you a question. So I'm going to guess you're pretty familiar with that auditor's report, and there's some, so help me understand how, what, you know, I'm looking at some of the language in here where, you know, it says, you know, hey, maybe we could do this for as much as only $170 million, not the $246 million that's currently in front of us. So help me as a potential voter and as a potential signatory to a letter of support, understand this discrepancy and how the current amount is justified.
Sure, I'd love to. And you're right, I do certainly have a lot of familiarity with that report. Couple of things about that. One is, we had our performance audit, as you've suggested here, and then we turned right around and what normally would be a one-year annual review after, we had one in three months. And in those three months of the five findings that the auditor pointed out, three of them were moot because we had already, the issues had either passed or they had been resolved. And I don't remember precisely the two that were remaining. I remember one for sure. But to your question, there was a difference in philosophy, as often is the case with those that are involved in the project and those that are auditors or people that are looking from the outside. And it was very simple in this case where the auditor felt that one way to, quote, "save money" would be to have the agencies purchase the end user radios. So what that would mean is, you know, in the slide deck where we had, let's say, 400 radios for Issaquah, that your city budget would have to pay for those, not the project budget. And that's where that difference in money came from. At the time that the audit report was happening, we did not have our final numbers from the system vendor yet, so we were estimating, I think we estimated something on the order of $50 million for the end user radios that are in the total project budget. The reality is, it's $49 million. So we were very close. And again, it was just simply the auditor's perspective that we could save money by not purchasing those as part of the project funds. And we felt that that was short sighted primarily because this new network is not compatible with your existing radios. And we didn't feel like it was adequate for us at this time to say to each city and each, there's 300 user agencies on the network, to tell them that they need to find a way to come up with the $50 million, and we just felt that was the project's responsibility.
Okay, thank you. And one other follow-on question. I think there's some, just some question about the governance model and the alternatives considered. Could you speak to that as well?
We worked from the beginning, probably, probably early in 2013 is when we started the discussions about governance. And that was done with the current owners, those that have votes on the, in the current network, which is governed by the Regional Communications Board in King County. And there was a lot of discussion, not necessarily about weighing every possible alternative, but there was discussion about two particular alternatives because at, from the beginning, we call them the partners, but the group of people working on this were primarily thinking, let's either keep it the same or let's centralize. So the analysis was all on operating from a joint board governance model or from a centralized nonprofit governance model. So all of our detail was done around those two options. Now, would you like me to go into more depth about that? Or can I follow up with some of our analysis with you later? Or what would you like there?
Actually, help me understand, we're really looking at a difference in costs, especially to the property owners and the voters, as it comes to whatever final governance model is selected.
We, by virtue of having a system that is larger, would expect, if everything were equal, that PISERN's network would be more costly, just in general. We've done a lot of modeling around staffing models for the central organization. We have a rate structure that has been developed, and I'm happy to share that with anyone that would like to see it. And we feel like both of those are very sound models at this point and very well thought out with a lot of detail in them. What that shows is that we are changing our model in terms of how we do the fees for users. In the past, we have not charged 911 centers for fees. We do intend to do that in the future. In the past, we have only charged end user radios for the use of the radio system. So as we've worked this new model in a centralized environment, we think that there's enough efficiencies there. And by spreading the rates out across all the users in a single, uniform rate, that what happens is, for the vast majority of users, their overall cost will decrease. Now, where that is not true is down in the south end of the county, there's a handful, about a dozen of the Valley Communications customers that will actually see increases in rates. But we've done modeling for the Epsa Cities, for instance. We've done them for other single agencies, and what we've found is that the rates will go, are going to go down. So that's what our modeling shows today. So your overall, in your overall fees with using the radio system will decrease.
And plus the fee for the connection?
That actually includes that. So it certainly is a new billing structure, you know, even for Issaquah to just bring it right here. So it certainly is a new billing structure, but the overall payments that the city has are expected to decrease.
All right, thank you, David.
Can I ask one question?
Please.
So there's a mention in the report too about the cost of the project being what it is, $250 million, but that the team is treating it more, this is, these aren't my words, the three or $4 million project for risk management purposes, and so the auditor was concerned about that. Can you speak to that a little bit?
Yeah, I sure can, and I can talk all night long. I can talk a lot longer than you can bear to listen. Again, it was a philosophical difference we had intended in the early days. I started this project in 2007, and when it was started, it was envisioned as a five-phase project with each phase being its own discrete project, if you will. We're currently in Phase Two of that five-phase project, and that will close out this summer if everything works out well for us here. So in that phase, it's a $4.9 million phase, and we have been treating the project from that perspective. But at the time that the auditor's report was written, we were just beginning to evolve internally to the point where we can't look at this as a $4.9 million project. We need to look at this as a $270 million project. So we were actually evolving our paperwork even as the auditor was working with us to understand how we were managing the project and what we were doing and why we were doing it. And we've now restated those project costs, so now we're talking about them in the manner that the auditor had suggested, which is the full project cost of $273 million.
Thank you.
Eddie, what else?
I just wanted to say, David, thank you very much for your presentation. And, you know, I probably could listen to you for a couple more hours, but we do have some other things we need to go on to. And like my colleagues here up here is that, obviously, we all, I also take very seriously, and I think it's really important that you don't get a busy signal, really important that you don't get drops, and understand too that, you know, the fear that can be put in you when the supplier says, you know, I'm not going to support that anymore, that there's an element of risk there, and we have to balance our options against what that risk requires. So, you know, there is, I do also wish, it's a big ask that's being made, you just said it yourself, it's the biggest project of the next decade for King County, and I assume we don't have to be in the ground very much. There's not a lot of digging around or a lot of holes, no tunnels to bore or things of those natures. So I know that that, there's a direct relationship between how much you're in the ground and how much risk projects have. So it's, you know, I'm a little bit more comforted by that. But again, we do your answers and the information that we have. I do appreciate it, and I'm going to be able to support this resolution.
So last, the final call for comments or questions? Seeing none, then, all those.
It's trying to cut me off.
Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you. I appreciate you being here as well and appreciate your direct answers to all of our questions. And I appreciate the comments from fellow councilmembers. And do you understand the enormous need for the project? That's never been really a question in my mind. And I will support this. I sincerely wish that we would have had this in more advanced notice so that we could have scheduled this for maybe a different forum. And I, thank you for coming.
I believe that was the last and final call for questions or comments. All those in favor of approving Resolution Number 2015-07, supporting King County Prop One, property tax levy, emergency public safety radio network replacement project set for the April 28th, 2015 special election, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That carries unanimously. David, thank you for coming this evening. Now moving to regular business, there are two items that have been moved to regular business. The first of those are the minutes from the City Council Regular Meeting of March 16th, And so, Council President Winterson.
This really isn't that complex, but in those meeting minutes includes a schedule for when we will be holding meetings, committee meetings, and council committee work sessions for the purposes of addressing the 2015 comprehensive plan. For various reasons, at leadership last Wednesday, we canceled the work session meeting for next week, April 13th. And the meeting minutes have in there that that's part of our schedule of our meetings where we're going to address that issue. So if we approve the amendment to the minutes, we'll be striking the calendar. It will also be correcting the calendar entry that has the April 13th, 2015 committee of the whole meeting. We're not going to have that meeting. This item's not going to be addressed. So this action to approve the change of the minutes corrects both the calendar and updates the minutes correctly. That's the purpose. So I think, does anybody have any, so anyway, there's the explanation. And I think a motion would be to, you know, adopt the meeting minutes as amended.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none?
Sorry, I'm not very fast.
Councilmember Milligan.
Thank you, Mayor. So the whole meeting next Monday is not being held?
That's correct.
Okay. And the calendar on the website will be updated to show that there's no longer a meeting on the 13th?
Right.
Okay. Thank you, that's all.
And thank you for saying that, too. What I should mention, too, if anybody's listening, there will, the topic will be addressed on the April 14th at Services and Safety, April 16th at the Council Infrastructure Meeting, May 7th at the Land and Shore Meeting, and then back at May 11th at the committee work session. So we have, I know, by no means are cutting off opportunity for public access or for our councils' access to this topic for conversation.
So all those in favor of approving the meeting minutes of March 16th, 2015 with amendment to Item E listed under the consent calendar, omitting a referral to the April 13th Council Committee Work Session, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That carries unanimously. Moving now to Agenda Bill 6983, complete streets/side walk extension on Newport Way from 12th Avenue Northwest to Maple Street. That is coming back from the Infrastructure Committee.
Okay, so, the Agenda Bill number?
6983.
Am I not finding that 698? So Josh, you asked to move it down. So what I'll do is, I'm going to read the summary and then of what and then of what this is all about.
Then we can.
Entertain a motion. So the Development Services Department, DSD, is currently in the process of reviewing and issuing permits for the frontage improvements along Newport Way required for the Pickering Hills development. So this is between 12th Avenue and on Newport Way east of 12th Avenue. This agenda bill requests council's consideration to approve additional expenditures of $240,000 to complete the sidewalk link between 12th Avenue Northwest and Maple Street. You can see that in Exhibit A. Developer Summit Homes is required to construct approximately 480 feet of frontage improvements along Newport Way, which will leave a gap of approximately 500 feet without sidewalk between their frontage improvements and Maple Street. Summit Homes is willing to construct the sidewalk to complete the connection to Maple Street and has provided DSD with a design in Exhibit B and a cost estimate reviewed by DSD to complete the sidewalk connection. The estimated cost is $236,000. In its review, DSD believes that there are items that are not required, and that the cost to construct the sidewalk will actually be approximately $214,000. The request for $240,000 is to allow for a 10% contingency. That's a description of the project. So.
Speak to the update.
Yeah, okay, thank you. So then on March 19, the Infrastructure Committee met with staff. We were the, we reviewed the project. It was Councilmembers Goodman and in Councilmember Share's absence, Councilmember Paulie joined, joined us. And in that meeting, after consideration of the presentation, we did vote unanimously to approve the funding for, for the ask to complete this sidewalk extension. Okay. So with that, I'm going to make a motion to authorize the additional expenditure of $240,000 from the real estate excise tax receipts for the purpose of paying the developer to construct the sidewalk along Newport Way from the end of their required frontage improvements to Maple Street.
Second. You need a motion? I mean, you need a second? Second.
It's moved and seconded. Discussions or questions? Councilmember Share.
Thank you, Mayor. So yes, again, I apologize for, I was being out of town and couldn't attend this, this committee meeting. But I had asked in advance of the committee meeting concerning this stretch of road what the project priority was. And I remembered, and it was several years ago, that we had talked in the former Transportation Committee about sidewalks in Issaquah, and there was a priority list. And so I asked for that information. And what the committee received was a list of sidewalks by name, and there was no information about prioritization or ranking. And I said to myself, I remember something else. And, and so the little gray cells went to work. And I said, where was this information? And I found it. And I think this is new information that the committee did not have the benefit of in making its decision. Now, whether this information would change the outcome of the committee's decision, I don't know. But I do think that when we're talking about spending $214,000 for a sidewalk, that we should at least consider what the trade-off is. In other words, if we have $214,000 available to use for this type of project, are there other sidewalk links or complete streets type projects, bike lanes, crosswalk improvements, et cetera, that this money could otherwise be used for? And so it's like when we do budgeting, we talk about the trade-offs. If we spend money on A, then we don't have it to spend on B. And I went back and I found the email. It was from December of 2011. It was provided to the Transportation Committee in advance of a discussion. But there is a sidewalk inventory report sorted by total points, which also includes a ranking. And this is actually, this comports with the comprehensive plan, which requires a ranking for sidewalk inventory reports. And along with that information also came in 2011 priority ranking criteria, of which there are six. And in fact, I have the sheet here. There is a lengthy description of how many points you assign to a sidewalk based on high accident, access for senior citizens or disabled, missing links, roadway classification or hierarchy, adjacent to or access to transit and school bus stops, and then nonconformance with width of existing sidewalk, of which there doesn't appear to be one. It's essentially a bike lane there. So I'd probably score high on that criteria. And, you know, I did an off-the-cuff calculation, and it seems like this project would be fairly high on the list, at least the list that I have. And I don't know if this information has changed in the last few years. But there's projects on here. The number one on the list was Issaquah Pine Lake Road from City Limits to Issaquah Falls City Road, ranked 76 total points, number one, 17 points above the next street, which was Juniper from Newport to Gilman. Then we had Dogwood, which is going to be addressed presumably through the Dogwood Project. Then we had 62nd Street, which will presumably be, be addressed through the Costco Shared Project. We had 221st from 56 to 224th. I don't think that's being addressed currently. Southeast Evans Street, Mount Olympus Drive, all the way on down. It's six pages on here. And so what I would like to see us do, I don't see the urgency in moving forward on this bill this evening, but I'd like to see us just do the due diligence and have the committee analyze this information in light of the total point inventory report and the criteria scoring mechanism. Because I think having criteria and having a list like this helps us make better decisions about these types of projects. I actually don't see Newport Way in this stretch of road on this list at all. So as recently as 2011, this corridor was not even considered as part of the sidewalk inventory report. Now, I would concede. There is an opportunity here, given the new development, and I would concede the potential for cost savings. And that's why I said from the outset, I don't know if the decision would be any different, per se. But I think, given this information that the committee did not have the benefit of, I think we, we owe it to our constituents to look at the scoring of this project and determine as a matter of ranking and policy whether this money is best used in this location. It may be a good deal. I'm not saying it's a bad deal. Is it the best deal for that $214,000 that we could get? So I guess, you know, based on this information that I've discovered that the committee didn't have, that I recalled we had once looked at, and, and it may die for lack of a second, but I'm going to move to refer this agenda bill back to the next Infrastructure Committee meeting to return to the full council after that discussion.
There, there, there is a motion on the floor.
I'm moving to amend, or I don't know what it is. It's a motion to amend the motion.
So the motion is to, to approve the spending?
And so you're moving to amend the motion to refer it back to the Infrastructure Committee?
That's correct. That's correct.
Is there a second?
I'm going to second that.
Did you second it?
Yes.
I seconded it.
So, discussion on the amendment. Councilmember Milligan.
Thank you, Mayor. This is confusing and complicated. It has been in committee and discussed. However, Councilmember Share's brought up that information was not presented to that committee to make the decision that they could have made if they had had it. So it's not going back to do the same thing. It's going back to have a new discussion. And where I support Councilmember Share's approach sincerely, because it, the word opportunistic was even confessed in the agenda bill. And opportunistic, we hope, in saving taxpayers' money from the city. But it doesn't say how much money we would save by collaborating with the developer to achieve this connection. The city will realize savings related to construction, blah, blah, blah. But I don't know what measurable amount that that would be. It's, there's just a dollar amount. It's $240,000, by the way, not 214. And so it is, it is very difficult to, to measure the value of sending it back to the committee. Now, I'd like to know before I did that whether there is a time-critical nature in approving this now or after it goes through another full cycle of going back to the committee and back. Would these savings that we may realize disappear in that, in that cycle? That I would like to know. And then the, before I lose my spot here, just to add another support to Councilmember Share's comments, that we do need a stricter method of coming to these decisions based on priorities, not just opportunities, so that we can weigh the cost savings against more perhaps critical needs where things may have dollar values and not dollar values, and, and make those decisions based that way. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Councilmember Paulie.
Just an additional question, too, for staff, maybe for Bob, is if the 2001, 2011 list that Josh is referring to, whether or not it's current and in a useful format that we could actually use it to evaluate proposals, or does it require updating? And what kind of effort level would that be?
So I can respond to that. The list would have to be updated. One of the, some of the information in the list that's required is accident information. And so that has not gone, we have to go back and redo that whole list, and it's very large and intense. So the accident information would have to be recollected from the data that we received from the state, watched out. But that hasn't been done yet. But it can be done.
And Gary, or Emily, or Bob, can you comment on the time sensitivity of this? I saw surveyors out there this morning, actually, when I came to work.
I don't know, unless Emily knows. I know that it's something they're ready to go forward on, and it's an opportunity. I'm not aware of, of their contract. I'm not aware of that. But it's an opportunity for us to be able to move forward with that contractor so they can start their work while they mobilize.
Okay. Thank you, Gary.
So they are coming towards the end of that development. And so there is some time sensitivity to it. Whether it's 30 days or 60 days, you know, we'd have to check with the contractor for sure. Doug Schlep, who's the other engineer, wasn't, wasn't able to join us tonight to give you a specific answer. But I think we know for sure that they're coming close to the end of that project up there in terms of the work that would be done. But, you know, there should be some, I think there should be some time, depending on when infrastructure meets, to have that additional review if so needed.
Okay, so a partial response to the question, and a, and a more complete response, Councilmember Paulie. Other questions or comments?
Yeah, comments. Thanks, Josh. I think that I, this information would have been very valuable to our confirmation, to our conversation within committee. So it's unfortunate we didn't have it available to us. It is dated 2011. I think by your own analysis, I would agree with that, that not only accident information, but clearly some of these, there's already plans to address. And so that would score things differently. It is striking to me that this section of road's not on here. So it's not just taking this list and saying what would be their new scores. It's almost like to do this right would be an all-new kind of inventory. That's a pretty, that's a pretty long project. I don't see that's a 30-day project at all. So, 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 so I appreciate that. I think that's, I don't know what the outcome would be. I'm not sure where our conversation would have been, but we would have had a different conversation. And, and that's for certain. And it's exactly this. In fact, interestingly, in researching for council goals, I came across the, that, that policy within the comprehensive plan that actually sets the scoring criteria. Prior to then, until I discovered that, had, I wasn't aware of that. It wasn't brought to my attention. So, so I like the fact that it exists. It's a tool that exists for a reason. We should be using these type of tools when we make assessments. Now, one of the reasons, and so, and that, I supported it in committee, too, was that, you know, every project has a certain amount of fixed costs. There is kind of the, I think we've been using the phrase mobility. Okay, you know, mobilize, get the people, get the resources, disrupt once, do the project. So there's value to us to include this part of the work as part of the existing project that's going to happen, paid for by the developer. Can you give me some sense, it can just be rough estimate, in, you know, what are, what are the mobility costs? What are, what are we, can we get some sense of savings by taking advantage of, of completing this sidewalk segment as part of the developer's project?
Typically, mobility costs can be as much as 10% or so, approximately. So if it's $240,000, you could save to $24,000, approximately.
Okay.
So I, I'm not sure how, I'm not sure how different the conversation would, would be. I'm sure we would be discussing that list. But I do, we did have a conversation about, you know, there are opportunities, and sometimes, you know, there are, when they present themselves, you, we need to consider whether we should take advantage of them. And in this case, I would hate to lose the 24,000 potential savings that we've identified. And also, if we find out that there, we're up against a closer deadline than we thought, then I'd like to hear that. When we find that out. Otherwise, I'm fine with sending it back, as, as long as those two things aren't problematic.
Well, I'm not sure we can answer those questions tonight.
Right. No, I didn't think we could.
Okay. Okay. Other questions or comments? So on the amendment, the amendment is to refer Agenda Bill 6983 back to the Infrastructure Committee for consideration?
I, I think it's very important that we operate, you know, with the best available information. And, you know, for that reason, I don't want to set a precedent to avoid criteria, to not consider criteria for such a large expense, when they actually existed and wasn't available. So I recognize that there could be some opportunity costs for us to not do this project now if for some reason, and I'm not saying that's the outcome. The outcome could be that we could choose to fund this in a time that works with the developer's schedule. So not preordaining the outcome, but I think it's, for, for reasons of protocol and, and correct process, I'm going to be supporting the amendment to my motion to send it back to committee.
So, all those in favor of supporting the amendment to refer this to, back to the Infrastructure Committee for consideration, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That carries unanimously. So that is our last item of regular business. Moving now to, for the good of the order. Does anyone have anything for good of the order this evening?
Yeah. Maker of the motion did second it. As the maker, and I did, I did second. As the maker, and I did, I did second the amendment. So that was my, my consideration, as that single vote was sufficient, if we agree with that protocol.
Yep. And so there's nothing for good of the order this evening, so we are, or is there?
Did you get a chance? So I'm gonna, I'm gonna maybe break a little protocol here. I do have something for the good of the order. But I know that everybody now has access to all our goals that were published. And, and you heard, I gave a report tonight already about how we discuss the mobility master plan, and there's one being put together. And I just wanted, I'm just going to take this opportunity to let my council members know that along with the co-sponsor, Councilmember Goodman, we proposed a, a goal which was really to bring forward the question about funding for the unfunded portion of the traffic concurrency package. And, and so that was, you know, we had talked among us, some of you were at Leadership when we talked before, about, hey, we would handle that as part of the, the mobility master plan. But, you know, this, so, but this is actually a proposal to pull that out, and this is, this is in and of itself a project. Let's answer the question about funding as it relates to that. And I just think that that is, some of you may have been wondering, and we may not, we're going to have other top opportunities, obviously, to talk about our goals, but I just felt that that was very important, that you understood how that stood in relationship, because it really is no mention to, about that relative to the mobility master plan in, in the goal. So I just want to take that opportunity.
Thank you. Anything else for good of the order? And we are adjourned at 8:53.